Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and then invocation. Will you like to call it an order? Today's planning commission, August 6, 2024. Let's have a roll call.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein. Clement Ogunemi. Dale Tyler.
Here.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Jennifer Keith. Mark Cloud.
Here.
Ray Cordial. Teresa Reynold.
Here.
Now we'll have approval minutes from our July 2 meeting. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Couch, second came from Mr. Cordial. All in favor? Aye. We are electing two officers tonight. It is one, myself moving from vice chairman to chairman, and then two, Mr. Howard Austin, assuming the role of vice chairman.
That's unless somebody else wants to volunteer for... We didn't have a lot of volunteers the other night when we talked about this either, so... So we need a motion to accept those two office and a second.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Are we set to vote on this one? Okay.
That passes eight to zero. All right, enough of that. Let's begin tonight's meeting with our table items. We have RP 24-06, Sams Club Edition, presented by Raspberry Surveying and Latoya Moton CBA.
Aaron Raspberry, Raspberry Surveying, asking for approval of the replat for one C and one D block four of Sam's Club Edition.
Any staff comments?
There are for planning in addition to standard comments. If you would please update the zoning on the plat just on a couple. The subject property, it was rezoned from C5 to C2 in June, so update that. And there's an adjacent property to the northeast and an adjacent property to the south that also had recent rezonings that just need to be updated. And we need to update the owner information on the plat, so the developer can be listed as Christian Brothers Automotive, but the owner still needs to be listed as the Sam's Real Estate Business Trust. And that goes for the same for the signature line for the owner, so the resolution and certification of transmittal needs to be signed by an authorized rep from Sam's. Other than that, it's good.
Engineering comments? Public comments? Commission comments? This will be a motion subject to staff comments?
So motion?
I have a motion by Mr. Cordial. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday night for adoption of the final replat, it needs to be... The ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
Tomorrow at noon, there's these changes?
Yes.
And we're good to go? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we move to public hearing rezoning. We did not... Let me back up and communicate. The Dean's Trail Commercial Center was tabled, as well as Chilled Out Investments LLC. And I believe there's one more. Perez? Perez? Perez Construction LLC was also tabled, and the final one is, Mr. Garcia was also tabled. Moving forward to our rezoning, this will be R 24-37, Jay Miller Holdings LLC, presented by Bob Downham.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Bob Downham. I'm here with... Wow.
You're in the spotlight, Bob.
Hello?
You're in the spotlight, Bob.
So I'm representing Jerry Miller with Jay Miller Holdings. He's wanting to rezone his two parcels, 3510, 3476 McCray, to C2. You guys probably know it, but it's quite a bit of mixed use in that area.
Any comments from staff?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plans recommend for approval is sure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any comments from the public? Commission? This will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Cordial. That passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Appreciate it.
Next item up is R 24-38, Maria Del Camino Martinez, presented by Julio Morales.
My name is Julio Morales, and Ms. Maria Martinez kind of like here. It's not here yet. Mr. Walter, it's almost here, so...
Okay, do we have his authorization to represent?
He is outside.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, we have to say here.
Okay, your request is to rezone the property from A1 to C5 at this location because you want to put a commercial activity there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The comprehensive land use plan does not cover this area since it was part of the Bethel Heights consolidation. It is an area along Highway 264 where there's a lot of other commercial development in that area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. It's sure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and proper locations, and encourage the development of light to medium density, commercial development along arterial streets that provide adequate setbacks and buffering to adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Any further staff comments? Engineering? Public comments? Committee? This will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, Mr. Taylor. This passes eight to zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th. Thank you.
Right now, let's move into section eight, public hearing, conditional use, C 24-11. It also has a PP 24-11 as well. This is Pickle Junction, presented by Swope Consulting LLC.
This is the property that you've approved previously for the big deal project, so the owner just wants to separate the land that he's not planning to use for this large scale into separate lots, and so that's what the preliminary plat does. The conditional use is for the tandem lot split that we have proposed, so there's some land on the other side of the creek that does not have road access. We have a way to bring vehicular access through there, but this is just the conditional use for that approval.
Staff comments?
Just as we talked about yesterday, and I've talked to Phil, the water will be there to the tracks one and two with the large scale. That's when they're planning on bringing that, and the lot three on the backside of the creek does have water with an easement.
And we asked that question because you can't get the final plat filed until there's water and sewer on each one of those lots.
Sure, no problem at all.
So, okay, you understand that it's not going to happen right away because you don't have those features there. So the property is still one lot until then.
Sure.
And also, we have that paved access that comes off of, down the side of the fire station area, or working with
Yeah.
that project to get it...
We are. Yeah, we're working with the tie-in that we'll make with, from the end of their paving to get it down to our lot.
Okay, so Ben, y'all have worked that out. We don't have any payments in lieu of this being identified or anything, but we know it will be done as part of the fire station project, or Katie? Okay, so you haven't made a proposal to them for extending it onto that lot?
We... To who? We've drawn it, we've designed it, we've surveyed it, we've gotten the plans of the fire station, so we know where we're tying in, and we've gotten that design put together.
But you haven't submitted anybody to look at yet?
To you guys, yes, it was in the plans.
Was it in the plans? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we would need that bill of assurance before the conditional use could be approved?
Okay.
As well.
Okay, so we can't do that tonight, is that what you're saying?
Well, if you're willing to do the bill of assurance, we can have that done. Are you wanting to go to council to get this final plat approved?
Not right now.
Next week?
No, no, because we have to get the water extended and the sewer extended.
I'm just making sure we're all on the same track, and you're not expecting to go to council next Tuesday night with a final plat?
No.
That needs to be signed in a couple of weeks because that's not going to happen.
Yeah, water and sewer is going to hold us up from that, that's right.
Okay, okay, then we're good.
Got a question. Have we started utilities?
Not at this time.
So nothing started so far?
No, we're close. We're at the Health Department with utilities for the big deal project, so...
And they haven't had a pre-con with engineering, and they can't start moving dirt or anything, can they?
Right, they're... Well, I think we're down to final comments if not everything addressed for the large scale, and then we will have to issue that grading formate before they actually get started.
I guess you're wanting to get this final plat approved here because you want to know it's going to happen?
No.
Or why are we doing it now?
We want the preliminary plat approved, not the final plat, because we have to do this before we can get to the final plat.
Okay.
So this preliminary plat will help in the financing portion to show them that this is planned to be separate lots, and that the big deal will only be on the smaller lot that's proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Don't come back in a couple of weeks and expect to do something different, is what I'm telling you.
I'm hearing you.
Okay.
Any public comment? Any comment from commissioners? I have a question, curious, just curiosity. Why are we doing the back split? I understand the front, making a commercial for future
Yeah.
Lot two obviously makes sense. What's the purpose for this one?
There's a phase two plan across the creek, so I don't know the exact details. I know this from outdoor court ideas. They may all change, but it'll be another project, so we just don't want to wrap up financing into all the land that might be used for another project later.
Understood.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Reggie.
Yes, sorry. So thank you all for having us. So the back's plat is going to be phase two, outdoor facility, fully functional to go with the large-scale indoor on the second middle plat.
So just a different approach, different development to phase two of this, phase two or three of this development process? You just want to separate it because of the natural separation that currently is with the...
Yeah, in order to get the project moving
Understood.
like now, we want to make sure the bank doesn't have all of the land.
Understood.
Thanks for being honest.
Oh, no, honesty is what we're here for, so...
Any other comments?
I was just concerned that you were trying to get the floodplain off of the front lot.
No.
Okay, because that doesn't accomplish that, because you've got the lot line in the middle of the creek.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we all know what we're talking about before we move this forward, because if that's what you were trying to accomplish, we weren't getting that.
No, purely for project timelines, bank finances.
So this will be a motion subject to staff comments and a call for the vote. I'm assuming the conditional use is called for the vote? Am I wrong? Yeah, so if somebody will give us a call for the vote on the conditional use?
Call for the vote on conditional use?
Call for vote for Mr. Cordial. That passes eight to zero. Now we need a motion subject to staff comments for the preliminary plat.
Motion subject to staff comments?
I did have a few comments for the plat, did you want to?
Sorry. Please continue, Katie.
Sorry. Okay, just, and it's not too bad, just that the access to lot three needs to meet the standards for an approved private drive, and then there's a small correction to make on the street sections where it says Rogers instead of Springdale.
Yeah, no problem at all.
So we have a motion by Mr. Couch. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler. That passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
The resolution to approve the conditional use would go to council on the 27th.
Awesome, thank you.
Next up are preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. We have before us preliminary plat 24-12, Clayton Street Business Park. We also have a waiver of street improvements, streets stubs and connections. This is presented by Engineering Services Incorporated.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This has come before the commission, at least twice before. Basically the same project, just trying to get reapproval. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report to engineering. Provide channel design for the phase one temporary drainage. Submit the right-of-way easement for the connection to Clayton Street, that's the existing right-of-way. Must stub out in all four cardinal directions, and we've come to an agreement to provide a right-of-way stub to the north, from what I understand, and we would support that waiver of street improvements. And then submit a floodplain development application.
Besides standard comments, planning only has the waiver that they've asked for.
Any public comment? Comment from the commissioners? This will be a motion subject to staff comments and a motion for it to council. Do we do the waiver first?
Okay, on the waiver, is it going to have to go to council? Yeah, the cardinal directions doesn't have to go to council. Okay.
So we need a motion to forward to council regarding the waiver of street improvements. Motion by Mr. Austin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cordial. That passed eight to zero, so it will be forwarded to city council, approval of the waiver of street improvements. Now we need a motion subject to staff comments regarding the preliminary plat.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Cordial.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. That also passed eight to zero.
Thank you.
Staff will take the waiver to the council on the 27th.
Thank you.
Next up is RP 24-07, College Heights Edition, presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
Dana Rosa with Satterfield Land Surveyors, representing the Moogs.
Staff comments?
For planning in addition to standard comments, please remove any future tense language to be proposed or temporary. All easements that are reflected on the plat should be either cited with a book and page or dedicated per plat, and there are several that are called out but don't have those. If this gets approved and goes to council, we need confirmation from Springdale Water Utilities about their acceptance, their confirmation of a 20-foot easement is needed along a water line, and if they are comfortable with the approximate water line location identified, and then if you will update the setbacks to reflect a corner lot, because with those two combined, we now have two fronts, two sides, that's all.
I did have a question about the existing easements. Unless we do a title search, how are we know that there exist easements on a piece of property?
You would probably need to do a title search then to confirm.
Normally, we don't do that as a surveying company. So I was just curious about that.
Well, you're asking it to be replatted, so that has to be put on there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Engineering? Public comment? Commissioners? This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Couch. Second by Mr. Austin. That passes eight to zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance has to be in our office by noon tomorrow. And you have several items that need to be addressed before they could ever be signed. So you may want to address those before we take it to council.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Next item up is RP 24-08, Sunrise Edition, presented by Bates &amp; Associates. This is a replat and also some variances as well.
Yes, I'm seeking a lot combination as a replat for lots three and four in Sunrise Edition. Also a variance for reduction in the side setback from eight feet to six feet, and a reduction in the rear setback from 20 feet to 14 feet for non-conforming structures on the property.
Staff comments?
For planning in addition to standard comments, we've noted the variances for the setback encroachment, and then there's just one update to the transmittal ownership and ordinance. There is a date that's been plugged in if you could just update that.
Yes.
No comments.
The two structures that you're asking for, the rear setback variance, are those permanent or portable structures?
After a site visit, it looks like they are semi-permanent. They are on, I couldn't tell if they were on a slab or if they were movable, so...
Okay.
Any public comments? Commissioners? Yeah, question about the variances. So you're, I want to make sure I'm clear, that you're requesting the variances strictly because of existing buildings that impede our current setbacks, is that correct?
Yes, for the side setback, it's the house that, upon research, was built prior to those setbacks being in place, and then the rear setbacks to make them conform.
So this will be a call for the vote to, I guess, move forward to the council, or this is just a pre of the variance, right? Any call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Mr. Hussein? That passes eight to zero. Now I need a motion subject to staff comments for the replat.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Tyler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. That also passes eight to zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you update, if you update that plat, if you'll make a note that those variance requests were approved tonight on that plat as an update.
Thank you.
Next up is FP 24-09, Monitor Meadows, presented by Engineering Services Incorporated.
Hi, Karen Ramirez with Engineering Services. We are looking for the approval of the final plat for Monitor Meadows subdivision. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Standard comments only from planning.
Engineer?
Okay, this is kind of an unusual situation, because this is a subdivision that's in the planning area. So there are no dedications of rights of way to the street, of the streets or any of that to the city. Okay, and there are notes that have been put on that plat that have been vetted by both the county judge, I mean, the county attorney and the city attorney to provide those streets as private streets, not public streets, for the county to take over for maintenance.
Correct.
And they all have septic systems?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? And do we issue, we don't issue any building permits out there, correct? So there's nothing like, so this is kind of unusual, so we're moving this really forward to the county, accepting it with really nothing to accept.
Any public comments? Commissioners? Do you know if there will be a POA established to help take care of that road?
We submitted those documents to staff previous to that.
City doesn't enforce POA, neither does the county. Is there a provision in that POA to set up funds to take for maintenance of the street?
I'm sorry?
Is there something set up in that POA for future maintenance of that street?
I believe so. We would have to go through that.
Is it a cost per lot or on an annual basis, or... The concern we have from the city standpoint, if this gets annexed into the city, it is not a public street, it is a private street. So in order for the city to take it over, and this needs to be noted, we would have to determine it was built to city standards and had been maintained before the city would want to take it over. Everybody needs to know that upfront.
We can revise those documents if needed.
Okay.
I spoke with the proposed buyer of this development, and they did say they will revise the POA bylaws and covenants to, and set up that fund to manage the roads.
Okay.
Can we include that in our staff comments?
We can include it in our staff comments. I don't know how we're going to enforce it, but sure, let's add it to the staff comments. At least we got on record saying that there needed to be a way to, for future maintenance of these. And there are access easements that's granted from one, from each of the lots. They all have access easements because they're not...
Yes.
Okay.
This will be a motion subject to staff comments. Would that add a comment that there will be a POA established to maintain the streets which will be private and not public?
So motion?
Mr. Cordial? Second by Mr. Austin. That passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
This approval will be submitted to the county planning office, so they'll know what action we took with the staff comments that goes with it.
Yes.
Moving on to large-scale developments, next up is L 21-03, Stronghold NWA, presented by Kurt Richardson.
I'm Kurt, representing myself. I'm looking to start my phase two of my project that, I guess, I'd set idle since I finished phase one for over a year. So I was talking to Ron, needed to come in front of you guys. I had planned to build it just as permitted previously, no changes.
Staff comments?
I did meet with Mr. Richardson out there, and he did good on the first phase, and yeah, we've talked about it, and phase two is just, that was approved in the previous set of plans.
Engineering?
From what I understand, all the grading was done with phase one, so there's no grading permit required, just need to get your building permit.
So did you just, is this taking longer, or...
Yeah, I'm self-financing.
Sure. Yeah, as you get it?
Do phase one, get it up and going, get the cabinet shop going.
Makes sense. Public comment? Commissioners? So be a motion subject to staff comments?
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Couch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler. That passes eight to zero. Next up is L 24-37 County Line Storage. This was previously L 23-56. We also have a variance for commercial design standards for entrances and pedestrian flow. This is presented by Swop Consulting.
We've been here before. This was a project that had more smaller buildings. It was just straight self-storage. There's now internal storage units available. So there's pedestrian doors on the sides of these buildings. They're much larger. There's more parking available now.
Staff comments?
For planning, besides standard comments, all sides of a principal building that directly faces an abutting public right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights-of-way. Then only two entrances are required, one along the primary street and one along the secondary, which a variance has been requested. Internal pedestrian walkways must be distinguishable from driving surfaces to the use of low-maintenance surface materials such as pavers, bricks, or scored concrete, which a variance has been requested. And then foundation landscaping is required. A variance has been requested. And I want to add on that, that Mr. Swop did add what would be missing in other areas on the landscaping plan.
Engineer?
We just need that estimate for the fee-in lieu of the street improvements. And so that estimate just needs to improve, include improvements to the center line to bring the road up to current arterial standard, including subgrade and base or evidence that it is already up to those standards.
Got it. We'll get that to you.
Would you like to speak on the entrances and pedestrian flow variance request?
Sure. On the landscaping, we had asked for that variance before on the old project, and it was granted. But in this case, there's now areas where there is customer entrances. And so in those cases, we've shrunk the building or we've shrunken it down so there is foundation landscaping everywhere we can put it. So the only places we're asking for that variance is where we have doors, garage doors, like self-storage doors coming in. And in those areas that we didn't put foundation landscaping, we're now overplanting in the pond area. So that's what Ron was talking about. As far as customer entrances, that's correct. I mean, there are customers, I guess there are technically customer entrances on the side where we have indoor storage, but they don't face the public entrance, the public street, so that variance was needed. Pedestrian flow, we do provide a sidewalk. We did the best we could. We've got a sidewalk from the public street sidewalk up into the first building. But beyond that, it's just, it's hard to ask to put sidewalk everywhere a self-storage facility needs it. So I think there was one more. I'm trying to remember.
Only show two on my sheet.
Okay, I guess that's it.
Any public comment? Comment from the commissioners? Do you want to take these variances together? This will be a call for the vote for the two variances, entrances, and pedestrian flow. Call for a vote, Mr. Austin. The variance request passed eight to zero. Then we'll take the large scale. This will be motion subject to staff comments.
Thank you. Motion.
Motion by Mr. Cardio?
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. That passes eight to zero. Moving forward to public hearing, Form Base Code. We have FB 24-03 Church of God Seventh Day presented by Cheryl Genie York.
Hello, my name is Genie Ulrich, and I'm with the Church of God Seventh Day over on Meadow Avenue. And we have owned the property since 1977. And it's always been just a grass parking lot. And in the spring of 2023, it became very muddy, and so we put gravel down. And we did not realize we were violating a city code. So we are seeking a deviation of the paving requirement to leave the gravel as it is.
Are you asking for a permanent deviation? Or are you asking for a bill of assurance to pave it in the next couple of years?
Permanent, because we've owned the property since 1977. It's never been a problem. And we're a small church and cannot afford to pave the lot.
Staff comments? Engineer? Nothing?
I guess my one comment is there's a lot of development going on in downtown now that hasn't been going on for years. And I was really hoping that maybe we could work out some way for in the next couple of years, you could get some paved and then we could extend it if you got some pavement done and move forward and trying to get it paved along. Is there any possibility that you could do that?
We are a very small church. I don't see any way possible at this time.
Okay. There were some discussions about some affiliation with a larger organization that might could help you be able to do some of this. Have that, that's not going to, that's not going to work out?
No.
Any public comments? Further comments from commissioners?
If we do a variance on this, is this specific to this owner at this time? And if it changed owners, it would change or?
Well, typically, these kind of variances go with the property itself. I guess we could grant a variance to this church. But is this the same church that's been there for several years? It just has a larger congregation now than it's had for a while? Because you have more cars parking there than you used to.
Right. We used to be a lot smaller church when we first started in 1977. And within the last couple of years, we've had a growth there. And we have more cars parking there, which caused the muddy condition, which caused the need for gravel to be put down.
All the parking's in the back. It's not down that drive. It's just all in the back.
It's all in the back.
And you enter and exit off of the side street, not the street to the north? Do you drive down by the?
There's two drives there. We can come in from the side street or the front.
So you have an area that you're driving across that doesn't have gravel on it, right? Can we go back to that? So you can drive down the east side of the building. Does it have gravel down through there too?
Yes, it does.
And how long has that gravel been there?
Since the spring of 2023.
Okay.
A little over a year.
And my request would be that if this waiver is approved, they would remove any gravel that's not in a parking area.
Meaning they can't use it for a drive?
Yes, like, well, if they want to use it for a drive. But I was looking at what they've shown on this plan, that that would stay gravel and everything else would be turned back into green space.
Is there a way that we can do something, we can prove and review every year or every other year just to make sure this, because this is obviously not what we'd like to have here? I'm just asking, planning anybody in the room, really? Is there something we can do that we can just monitor the situation, make sure it's well-kept and there's no issues with the gravel?
Well, I can say at least over, because I think we first met with the church a little over a year ago to address this. And I think Ron went out several times. And we've, we've been trying over the last year to do what we can to work with them to see if we can come to a solution. And here we are.
The only way I know of it, we would do a bill of assurance to allow the gravel to stay with a review every year to see what condition it's in or if there's any possibility of getting it revised so that it's not just a blanket variance for that. But it's a way to let the church look at it, and we know how it's taken care of over the next year.
Are you open to that, ma'am? What it states is every year you have to come back and tell us, hey, we still don't have money to pave it. And in the meantime, we've had people go out, look at it. Everything looks, still looks good. And we'll continue to give you this ability to use it as gravel until at some point either it becomes where it's not in good condition anymore or you have funds to pave it. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I just, I actually live over in Oklahoma now. The minister is here that is minister there at the church. It would just be easier just to have it permanent, so I wouldn't have to come back and forth.
Understood. It's just such a deviation for what we're trying to do across the city, especially in this area.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to meet in the middle. I guess is what we're trying to ask.
I think another option that we could consider is if you have the funds to pave a smaller area for a few cars, and then the rest of your congregants use street parking because there is public parking on the street in this area.
Yeah. Do you have anything to add, Joshua?
I mean, that's an option. The thing is, it's paved again.
Sorry, you need to come to the mic. Sorry. That's okay.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, the issue is money, right?
We need your name. I'm sorry for minutes.
My name is Josh, Joshua Portillo. In Spanish, it's Jose, but you can call me Josh. So the issue is always money, right? So the thing is, the church has been there since the 70s, right? 1977. And as of now, I've come from California to help out the church, you know? And because I love Arkansas, I love Springdale, and I love the church. And as of now, we've just been trying to, we've been getting more people to come. We've also would like to have it paved, but as of now, it's still too early for us. I've been here for about three years with the church, and there just isn't enough funds to actually pave the parking lot. So I don't know. I know when I talked to Ron, we were talking about having the ADA, right? Regulations, the meat that by paving the handicap area. And that's something that we can do. We can have concrete there. But to actually pave the whole thing with asphalt or concrete, I think that would take a little more, yeah, just more, more money. That's what it is. And also just to add in there, it's the only church, I think, around this area. You know what I'm saying? So I know you guys don't like gravel or you guys don't want gravel for your, for the future of this city. But I do think you guys should consider that it is the only church around here.
Well, there is another church on Meadow Street further to the west.
I think they're renting though, right? It's not a church building. It's in that, actually, they're just renting the.
Well, but they have made improvements to that, to that location where it has paved parking and stuff. And they got a bill of assurance to do it over a couple of years. That's why we're offering a bill of assurance that if you're offering to pave the handicap space, okay, in a year's time, you have to come back and we see where you are, and then we'll evaluate where you are based on that. Basically, what we're telling you is we've got to work toward a plan of being able to get some of the gravel gone and some pavement with that bill of assurance. Is that something we can work together on and see if we can make that work over the next year or so?
Can you give us more time than a year?
Well, we want to review it every year. That's not saying that you have to have any more paved in a year. What we're saying is we want to see that it stayed in the same condition, that kind of stuff in a year. And then we talk about it a year and see where you are in a year's time. Maybe you're in a better position in a year.
I mean,
Okay, let me tell you what the other option is. If the planning commission turns down your variance, and you're going to have to move, remove the gravel and quit parking on it. That's the other option.
Yeah, but you guys still have to vote, right?
Yes, sir.
We would still have to vote, but I'd encourage you to take the first option, to try to meet in the middle. I know it's a pain to come back every year, but that's, I think that's the best we could do as a commission.
Is there something that stipulates you have to come back since you live in a different areas or somebody that can represent?
Well, would we give the bill of assurance to the church as Church of God Seventh Day, the church itself, not to the property owner? You were asking, is there a way? And I think the bill of assurance would be given to the church saying in a year's time, the church has to come back and indicate to the planning commission where they are, what they've accomplished in that year. And then we determine if we extended another year or two years or whatever, rather than you having to come back as a property owner. If you would authorize them to represent and have that kind of a bill of assurance on that piece of property.
I have a question. So we've owned this property since 1977, and it was just grass covered until all the more traffic came in and it was muddy. I just went by the property and I took some pictures. And there's starting to be grass growing up through the gravel. So eventually, it's going to be back to where it was when we bought the property in 1977, because.
You can't park on grass either.
You can't?
Nope.
Okay, well, we have since 1977. We've owned it that long.
I understand that, but the ordinance changed several years ago that paved, that parking areas and vehicular travel areas have to be paved. Now, you've been very fortunate that it didn't happen up until that, till now. And I think it's because there's so much activity going on in downtown that we see different things that we didn't see before.
Even though we're up on a side street, back away from that stuff. Okay. I guess we'll have to take the first option.
You can ask for a vote on the variance if you want it and see what happens.
I just have a question on the condition, because earlier you said if, you know, we come to you every year and we just explain like, hey, we still don't have the funds for a paved parking lot. You guys would consider it, vote on it again and allow us to have another year, right? But now, when I heard you reiterate it, or it sounded as if we had to show some sort of improvement every year. I just want that to be clear, right?
Well, I think what I'm saying is we got to see that you're taking good care of it. You're keeping the grass out of it. It's being used for parking. And it would be nice if you could tell us that you're making progress and in another year or two, you could pave it. The ultimate goal is for areas that are being used for parking to be paved. That's what we're trying to get to.
Okay. I get it. I get what you guys want to do. I just want to be sure that, you know, so it just depends how, where we're at a year from now. You know what I'm saying?
We can't guarantee that it's going to, the vote will go any direction in a year. I mean.
Because right now, like, our church is willing to do something by paving the handicap area, actually create a handicap area. But if this is a requirement for us to be able to come here every year, I'd, you know, that we have to show some progress. You know, it's out of our, it's out of our hands. It just depends if we have the funds. I don't know if you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're stating is our long-term goal is to have it paved. Short-term goal is to work with you to help you get to that point. If you're, if you pave a spot for ADA and then you keep the gravel clean by spraying it so the grass doesn't grow up among the gravel, so the gravel doesn't disappear, and you maintain the way it is now. I think we've been out a few times and it looks, I think, I think we're okay with what it is now. So if you maintain what it is, and let's say a year from now, you want to pave three more spaces or whatever, just some improvement, or at least nothing worse. That's what, that's what we need as a commission. We got to have the ability to make sure that things aren't deteriorating outside of our control the best we can, with the hope that we can help, you know, you find or hopefully you can find sources to pave it. That's our, that's our goal is to help you. We're trying to work with you, give you time to find resources so at some point, you can pave it, whether you do it five years now over a period of time or if it's shorter than that, or whatever the case may be.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay. So I think we're saying this will be a bill of assurance to the church or the property owner. Have we decided that? In the church.
It doesn't matter. I'm an hour away. I'm over in Locust Grove, Oklahoma. So, or I can always sign the paper to let him represent me if I'm not able to come. Whichever way.
Okay, so what we would be doing is approving a variance with a bill of assurance given on the property, which would be the property owner, for it to stay as it is with the paving of one handicap space. And it's a bill of assurance for one year, which means you have to come back in a year. Okay? Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, that'll be, yeah, it's a motion, and I'll need a call for the vote.
So motion.
You mean call for the, that's Mr. Cardio.
Call for the vote.
Chris.
That passes eight to zero. Thank you both.
Okay, you need to get with staff in the next couple of days so we can get that, uh, drawn up and it is filed as a lien on the property, so we know a way to, to move forward with it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we're, uh, along to board of adjustment, we're looking at B twenty-four dash forty-one, Dunn Wright Builders, Inc., presented by John Campbell.
What, uh, what we want to do is just, is, is really a simple situation, it's putting a duplex onto the lot and it's kind of a narrow lot. In order to make the duplex real livable, we just need a little more space on each side. So, we're just requesting a, a variance of three feet on each side to reduce it from eight to five.
Staff comments?
Fire Department's opposed to this, um, granting of this variance. This, um, is a increased density on an old city lot, and there was a reason why we used to have eight-foot set, we still have eight-foot setbacks, is that in these older parts of town, you would have, um, you didn't have the fire protection that we have now in the newer parts of town especially, but this street in particular, it doesn't have any fire hydrants on it, it doesn't have any other protection, and now we're making even more density by putting a duplex on it, and we're concerned that this would lead to conflagration conditions between houses because they're so close together.
Any further comments? Staff, engineering, public comment? Commissioners? Yeah, as I look at this plan, um, I think we're for infill, for sure. Uh, I think this particular plan, in my opinion, doesn't fit this lot. Uh, I would be open to looking at a different design that, that maybe got the same density but didn't encroach upon or setbacks for the reasons just stated. Is that something you'd be open to table and come up with a different design for this and bring it back to us?
Potentially, but we've looked at different designs, and, and the buildings that are existing on either side are far away from the setbacks. They're not, you know, bunched up next to it. Houses on each side are already there and they've been there for a long time and.
Yeah, but they could be torn down and rebuilt, asking for the same thing, that's the problem we get into.
That's true.
Do you want to ask for a vote on this, or do you want to table it and see if we can come up with something that works better that the fire department's good with?
Uh, I'm not sure what, what would be the criteria for something that.
Something that fits without a variance, the side setbacks is what we're looking for.
Yeah, the lot's very, somewhat narrow, but it's long, so there's, there's definitely some, some different designs that would fit this a little better and not encroach upon a setbacks, if you're willing to work through that with the planning staff.
Um, you mean still do a duplex?
Well, I don't think any of us have an issue with it being a duplex.
Okay, well, then my question is, how is it gonna be, I mean, the fire department, it'd be easy to get to any spot on this duplex, because if it's side by side, there's no going around to the back, it's just all right out there in the front.
Yeah, there's already kind of an existing problem in that area with the, like Ed said, with the amount of density, the older homes, the lack of water, um, hydrants, things like that. So, the, the fire department is gonna oppose anything that's gonna reduce the maximum setback that the city requires, okay? So, if you can reconfigure or, or change or turn your duplex, we're happy to work with you. We don't oppose development in that area, we're just opposed to a plan that's gonna, that's gonna in- increase flame conflagration, bring structure to structure, especially in an older neighborhood with limited water and access.
But how, I guess my question is, how would it impact the fire department if there was a fire, whether there was a, a five-foot setback or an eight-foot setback?
Well, right now, there's, there's only a, you're, you're asking for a few feet, but every foot matters whenever your neighbors start doing that and you get homes closer and closer together, and this is a standard that the city has set forth and this is the standard that the fire department supports. So, if we, if we were to do that, we would have to do that with every project.
Okay, is there any, uh, amount of feet that you wouldn't be opposed to?
Eight feet.
Eight.
That's the setback, if you can make it fit with eight foot, we, we're, we're good. Do you want the commission to vote on your variance request?
I've got one, one comment that, that may help us out. We do have a proposed bond project to extend Sunset to the east, to Powell Street, um, and that will open up connectivity to Charles in the future.
Okay, we, we probably need to table this request and work with some of that and see what we could work out instead of, I mean, it, we, we might could help you out with
some of this, if we move forward with it. If you want the variance to be voted on and it's denied, you can't come back and ask for the same variance for a year. Now, you can appeal to city council, if city council denies it too, or doesn't, overturn the planning commission's decision, you can't ask for a variance for another year. I think what we're saying is, if you come in and sit down and talk to us, we might could figure out a way in the future to help you to get something done with what all is going on in that area.
All right, that's what we'll do.
So, you will table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to withdraw it at this point, and then when we get things worked out, you can come back if you need one then? If you table it, we gotta come back next month and we may not have it all worked out in a month.
Can you say that?
Okay, if you table it, it is put on the agenda at the first of the meeting next month. We may not have it all worked out by then.
Okay.
If you withdraw it, then when, when we decide or we work out what something needs to be done, you can refile and we can figure out what needs to be done then.
We'll withdraw it then.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir. That is withdrawn. Now, we go to B twenty-four dash fifty-eight, Thomas Witton-Luken, presented by Thomas Witton-Luken.
Hello, everyone. My name's Thomas Witton-Luken here. Um, I live at five-eight-three Lincoln Drive, and I am proposing, um, from, there's currently a thirty-foot setback on Moody Avenue, which is the front, I guess, of my property, and I'm requesting it to be, um, nine-foot, so I can build a, um, a shop, a forty by forty.
Staff comments?
The only comment planning has is we just want confirmation of that measurement, of that nine feet, of where you started that measurement, um, just so that we are, we're hearing the right request. Do you remember where you started that measurement from?
Um, I believe I started it at the property line, at my property line, based upon the survey that was provided.
Okay. And then how will this shop be accessed from your existing drive on Lincoln?
From my existing driveway.
Okay, you're not gonna add a drive on Moody?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question, is it, is there a reason why it can't be reconfigured or moved further to the back and not encroach on that side setback so much?
Um, I just would prefer not to cut down any trees if I don't have to, because there's a lot of, uh, pretty trees on the property and they've been there for a while and I would just prefer not to cut them down.
And you're set on that size?
I can go smaller if need be, but I would prefer a forty by forty.
So, where I'm getting at, your hardship is self-imposed because of the size and the location you picked, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's a corner lot, it's always been a corner lot, that hasn't changed?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Any comments from public? Commissioners?
Assuming it be a slab, concrete slab?
Yes, sir.
Are you set on the forty forty, would, could it be same square footage, configured differently to accommodate a, closer to the thirty-foot setback, so it's more of a rectangle or some square?
I mean, if I did it to the thirty-foot setback, it, I would, I, e- either way, I, I tried many different ways to configure it to see if I could, you know, avoid cutting down trees, or if I, I mean, the only way to make the size work that I would prefer is if I, I asked for the, obviously the easement, otherwise I would have to cut down trees.
Sure. Yeah, the only issue I'm struggling with is just, uh, as Patsy mentioned, this is kind of a self-imposed hardship and those are, you open those can of arms, it gets real, it, it's amazing what will come in this room and ask for, so that's the only problem I have, not necessarily with your request specifically. Any other comments? It's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for a vote, Mr. Couch. That fails, it tied four to four.
You have the right to appeal that decision to the city council. Your decision, your appeal has to be filed with the city clerk within fifteen days from today's meeting to state why you think that the, uh, planning commission erred in their decision, and then you have to notify the adjacent property owners again, okay?
So, if it, if I was to build it smaller, would it possibly pass?
Well, that's a what-if we can't address.
Okay.
I mean, you'd have to come back with a, a different approach, that kind of stuff. Uh, I get the feeling from just the discussion that if you could do something a little bit different, not quite as drastic, a setback, you might get somewhere, but I don't vote either, okay?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving forward, we're, B twenty-four dash fifty-nine, Andres Appelliner, presented by Andres.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just go by Andy, so, um, first of all, thank you very much for taking the time. Um, I want to give some gratitude to your staff, I've worked with Rod and quite a few other people on the staff. Matter of fact, this afternoon, I actually was thankful and commented to some of the staff in the fact that I've lived in multiple other states, Arizona, Chicago, et cetera, and just the fact that your folks answer the phone and actually give great guidance and insight is amazing. So, from Chicago, Florida, Arizona, my goodness, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, been around the world, so, thank you all for that time. Um, also, wanted to thank you all for listening to this, um, given the hearing, because what I think we have right now is a little bit of a variance request that could have probably been addressed just between neighbors, some of my neighbors are here, so I'm sure you'll hear from them. But the appeal is very simple, just to have the, uh, screening fence stay up. It's approximately less than three feet on three borders of the fence. It's not an actual fence structure per se, but it provides some shading for the, for the vegetable garden there that we have, and also with the increased density, population, you know, the growth on Missouri, also new homes down the road on, Road Don Tyson, it does help a lot with blocking of, uh, road noise, lights at night, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's my request. I'm sure there's other people that would want to speak. Um, I'm amenable to council's guidance, but I am requesting the variance for it to stay up. It is not gonna go the full length of the fence. Um, when we spoke with planning, they indicated that we should put it up as if it was gonna go the full perimeter of the backside of the house, but right now, what's present is there. I have measurements on one of the other, other slides also.
Comments from staff? Bubba, come in. Please come to the podium. State your name and address. Please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Shirley and my address is two-thirty-five Chantilly Avenue, and I live next door, and, um, the fence, um, my concern is that should I want to sell my property, that I would have difficulty and that it's not standard fencing. I bought the home a year ago and it was in code and I feel like it's no longer in code. And it is a new fence, it was replaced during the tornado.
Thank you. Any other pub- public comment? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Glenn Thrash, I live at two-five-one Chantilly Avenue, and I'm here to oppose this nine-foot section fence in height. Uh, six-foot is the norm for all the area. I live in the Renaissance area, and it probably consists, I would say, probably of maybe a hundred and fifty houses, I'm not sure, but ever residence has a six-foot fence, privacy fence. Here we have this fence that he has extended, and it's not a fence, he's extended on average of three feet in height. I can't understand why someone needs a nine-foot fence, but every home in this area has the same fence, we all have the same look, very nice fence, the people in this area, they maintain their homes, their yards, they spend money in doing this, and we would like to see it remain as it has been. And to look at what we have now, and I go out on my deck, I live two houses from this, and when I'm out on my deck and I look back, all I see is this fake greenery and the framing of a fence wall. And to be honest with you, when I look at it, it makes me think I'm down on Dixon Street at a beer garden, and I mean, we don't need that. We would like to maintain what we have. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Commissioner, any comment?
So, I was gonna ask that before he said that, is that live or is it artificial vines through that fence?
It's artificial, uh, it's safe, it's flame retardant, just like anything else that would be construction material, it's got, um, uh, a life expectancy of ten to fifteen years to be anti-fade, so it wouldn't, uh, you know, deteriorate and then be an eyesore, because we don't want that. And, um, I want to thank my neighbors, I really wish they would have chatted with me, because we could have probably resolved something before coming here, because it comes down to being more of a, uh, property value thing. I'm a former Realtor, I've actually talked to your planning commission about looking at some other properties here that I wanted to subdivide, so I completely understand and support maintaining property values. The reason that the other sides of the fence were not completed is because code violation came up, they asked me to do a variance, et cetera, et cetera, so that's what we're going through. If you look at the pictures, can you go back one or two? Basically, the representative side, which would be on my side, I think it looks pretty aesthetic, and I think it does provide everyone a little bit more value. Back one more, I'm sorry. One more. Or maybe forward. Okay, so, go back one. All right, no, that's not a good one. Okay, so, the point right here on the far right, you can see that the screening covers up all of the two-by-fours, so that it is aesthetic. We did not cover the other side on the neighbor's side because we had to stop the work and continue, but I'm open to doing that on both sides of the roads, so it's a hundred percent aesthetic for both sides. You know, we, we can find a solution. The other thing is that, I, again, I'm so sorry, because these are my neighbors and I'm always available for them to include, my wife, when Shirley, uh, when Lisa had a surgery, you know, we, we sent her flowers and everything, but the point is that some of these things can be resolved. As far as code, I understand code. Matter of fact, my profession is a contracting officer for the federal government, so code and technical inspections, regulations with engineering, I totally understand that, but it's not a fence per se, it's a screen, which I understand there's variables, which is why we're here for the variance. So, um, as far as property values, my neighbor, when I chatted her with her this, just this past weekend, I didn't even know that she had a concern with it, because anyone could have brought up the concern at any point in time, and her response was that she really didn't, wasn't concerned about the backside or the other neighbor's side, just not her side. So, it's not about code, it's about property values and aesthetics. Therefore, I continue to request a variance to say, can we meet in the middle and identify what's positive for all parties, find the win-win?
I have a couple of questions. Warren, the picture on the left, is it your house on the left side of this fence?
On this side of the fence is Ms. Lisa's house.
And your house is on the right side?
Correct, that's my house on the side.
And what's the purpose again of the screening? Why did, why did you, why did you install the screening?
With the increased traffic population, there's new houses further down on Tyson, there's the whole new development that's coming up on Old Missouri, so we bought the house in twenty-twenty, there's been a little bit of increased traffic, at times at night, the road traffic coming back and forth, but more so the lights. Um, the other barrier was also to ensure that there'd be enough shade for the, um, excuse me, for the garden that my wife has. On the right side are neighbors, the Lee family, they're not here, but we also chatted with them, they had no issues, we chatted to a few of the other neighbors, none of them have had issues, and they had the opportunity to come here through either the certified mail or the public notice on the front of the house. But on the other side of the house, their porch is raised, so when they stand on their porch, they have total view into our house, and actually, I believe that is something that they appreciate, because it gives them their privacy on their side, not Ms. Lisa's, but the other person, the other family on the other side of the house, basically the west side of the house. house, basically the west side of the house. So it's privacy, shade. I believe it's been pretty aesthetic when you look at it from the representative side, which is my side, and I'm willing to make the amends to make sure that everyone's happy.
Can we see the other picture? The slideshow of the other one, please? The middle picture, is that your property?
No, the middle picture is the Edens property. They own like, basically, three or four huge lots behind our home, so the middle picture is the ugliest one. I'll give you that. All right? The middle picture, our home, is on the other side of the fence. So what I did there was initially just try to see if paint would kind of help blend it, but then again, code says, hey, we got to get a variance, so I stopped. But I wish there was a better picture that you could see the more representative side. I forwarded some pictures, but it's very good on the representative side. So we can find a win-win, I would think so. Yeah, no, no, that's not my, are you looking at all the overgrown?
Best decision you can.
Correct, yeah, so that middle picture is a large lot. One of our neighbors, the Edens, they own cows. They have a nice area.
As far as aesthetics, that doesn't look very good.
No, that's the non-representative side.
In the past, you know, we've allowed an eight-foot fence like around a pool inside of a fence.
Correct.
Is there any way you could put this inside your fence instead of on your fence?
So Ms. Lisa brought up a great point, that both of our fence lines were torn down, okay? This fence is a split fence, which we, the previous owners, they put up. We shared the cost of materials, so it's a joint-owned fence. I don't know how that's titled, I'm not stressing that. But yeah, absolutely, if that is the need, and that's going to satisfy the situation, then I would ask to get proper guidance as to what would be allowable and what would be the best fit.
I just know we've allowed an eight-foot fence around a pool inside of a six-foot fence.
Yeah, it's kind of...
On the inside, just because we didn't want the fence on around the perimeter to have to be over six feet.
Right. It is a challenge, but I'm open to inside guidance. You know, the request is for the variance for it to stay. I heard earlier during one of the other personnel speaking that sometimes the variance is allowed only for that particular owner, but doesn't ride with it. So again, I'm open to ideas, thoughts.
That's all I've got for you, because I don't think I would pass this here, just personally.
Okay.
Any other comments? Is there a call for the vote? Call for the vote by Mr. Couch. That variance request fails eight to zero.
You have the right to appeal the variance request to the city council. You have to file an appeal with the city clerk's office within 15 days and indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was an error, and you have to notify the adjacent property owners. It will be scheduled on no later than the second meeting following the time that you submit the variance request.
All right. And if no appeal, then the order is to remove the structure?
That's correct, it has to be removed.
Within what timeframe?
David, does he have 30 days? Or the appeal period is in 15 days?
Yes, ma'am, once the appeal period is run, technically, he's subject to enforcement anytime there's not some sort of a pending question.
If you don't file the appeal in the time limit, then it needs to be done at the end of that 15 days.
Another 15 days. Okay. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Moving forward, we're looking at B-24-61, Elm Springs Road and North 48th Street, Springdale. This is a variance request for commercial design standards, interests, and landscaping.
Jeff Bates with Bates &amp; Associates, and I can help explain these. The first one is the entrances facing the right-ofway. It's a jewelry store, and they're wanting less entrances for security. And the landscaping is foundation landscaping, and they have a couple of display windows so you can walk up and look at the jewelry, and that's, other than that, we're landscaping all the way around the building.
And actually, this structure doesn't have access to Elm Springs Road?
Correct.
Elm Springs Road. Your only access is to that drive that goes into Mercy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you are using a joint access that you shared with the property to the west?
Yes.
But you are making a sidewalk connection to the drive to the south? Is that what that shows?
Yes, to the south and to the north.
Okay, yeah, okay. And then the landscaping, you put perimeter landscaping in those areas where you could put it? And I think you've got equal number of landscaping, it's just in different locations, correct?
Correct.
Further staff comments? Engineering? This will be a call for the vote. Public comments? Commissioners? Any call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote, Mr. Tyler. Those variance requests pass eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is B-24-63, MT NWA Ventures LLC, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a variance request to have some gravel parking for heavy equipment behind some office warehouse, flexible space on Worth Lane. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
I want to be first on this one. I distinctly remember when we approved this piece of property, that there was a statement made by the developer or by the engineering firm that would be nothing in the back, because the structures do not have doors that go to the back. You don't drive-through, you don't have access to that from the parking lot, or anything like that, correct?
There are garage doors where you can drive-through to the rear.
Okay, but there was not going to be anything stored back there? And now you want to put heavy equipment on every, all that area that's purple?
Yes, they have a tenant that's a construction business, and they're wanting to park heavy tracked equipment back there in their work.
And they're going to drive-through the buildings to get to it? How are they going to access it?
Yeah, from the garage doors.
Also, there's been change in uses of several of these pieces of property than what we started with, with trades and services. What's in the building that has the green area behind it?
Dog boarding or...
Okay, and so that's got astroturf and stuff put behind it, correct?
Yes.
And now we have a dance studio on the other end, and we had to adjust the parking for that? And we have two parking agreements for some additional parking in the property to the west, because there wasn't enough parking on this side for the change in uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Further staff comments?
I was out there just the other day. There's, from the original large scale, there's probably still six or seven items on the original punch list that still haven't been done, and we've not released C of O on all the buildings due to that. The back area is still just red dirt with weeds growing up in there. There's some concern about some of the drainage. There's still a fence that needs to be built. We've been out there multiple times on some inspections out there, trying to get this one closed out.
Engineering?
If I remember correctly, they also bonded for sod in the detention pond, and I don't know that that's ever been placed.
But the drainage calculations were not supposed to have anything hard surface in the back, correct?
That is true, so that will need to be addressed with an updated drainage report.
I think the entire property was designed as commercial, so it would be equivalent as if it had been paved, so there shouldn't need to be any change in drainage.
But what about the statement that there would be nothing in the back? So I'm not sure that the calculations and the drainage took into account that that was going to be asphalt or pavement or gravel back there when it originally came in.
Right, we'll have to look at the drainage report and see if that was taken into account or not.
Brandon, is your statement that that was the blue shades that was originally paved? Parking or grass? I'm confused, I'm sorry.
So when we did our drainage analysis on this whole project?
Yes, sir.
We used the fully developed condition, the 90% impervious area.
A lot of times when we're looking at commercial areas like this, we kind of assume as a whole that, you know, that there's going to be a certain amount of impervious area. So if we use that fully developed condition, it's probably that the detention pond was designed for that amount.
Understood. Any public comment? Commissioners?
What's the timing been from what Ron was talking about, from closing this project out till today, from the punch list and things?
We started, we gave them C of O on the first building probably a year ago, and they weren't done with construction on the other two, or other three buildings. Now construction is done on all of them. I'm holding up C of O on the, which would be the third building from the east, until we get the stuff done. We still have power poles that need to be removed. It's been at least a year probably since the first building was released.
Is that stuff, I guess, actively being pursued, I guess?
It's being worked on. I wouldn't say it's being, you know, eight to five Monday through Friday, but it's been worked on.
I received a bond for sod in January, and I think the reason was we thought it was too cold to plant the sod.
Don't think that's a problem.
Has it been sodded?
Odd enough?
Do you know?
I think it's been sodded.
You don't think it's been sodded?
I guess my biggest concern is with the existing tenant mix of light commercial, I would call it, and this request looking to be at best heavy commercial, probably more realistically industrial, that just doesn't feel like that's a good mix of those buildings, especially with all the work and all the different things that we went through to accommodate parking and just use of the building currently. That's the biggest issue I see, is just the mix of use seems to be not very productive in my mind. Any other comments? Is there a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Mr. Couch? That variance request fails seven to one.
You have the right to appeal. The planning commission's denial to the city council has to be filed within 15 days. In the city clerk's office indicating why you think the planning commission's decision was an error, notify the adjacent property owners again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is B-24-66, Cross Church, presented by Mike Jones.
Good evening to the board this evening. I'm here to represent First Baptist Church, also known as Cross Church, on 1709 Johnson Road. The request is a variance in size for the signage on the building. As many of y'all may know, Cross Church has been investing heavily in its new structures and buildings on the property, and has, in the middle of revamping its entire worship space. As such, we're requesting a variance for the size of the sign on the backside of the building, which actually is the name of Cross Church and its logo, which faces northeast, not facing either any street directly on that part of it. The other variance is for a new sign that says Cross Students on the Johnson roadside of the building. That's the one you see demonstrated right there on that part of it. As you can see, these buildings are very, very large. That wall itself nearly stands 40 feet tall, and according to the allowance by right in terms of size, it would, there would be no sign there at all in terms of being able to show up. These are non-illuminated signs, so there will not be any light cast during the night or evening hours because of them, and it will allow for the church to better identify the direction. And there is, based on the small picture on the right that you see, the church is basically a T-shaped configuration, and where the red dot is, is the worship center, and that is the entry side on the northeast corner, versus the Cross Student, which would be on the southern side of the building as well. So the church has requested this variance in size, so it'd be appropriate to the structure and visible to its members as they approach and come to the building.
Staff comments? Engineering, Katie, you got anything on this one? No. Question, Cross Students, is that painted? What type of sign is that? Is that representative? Are you just showing the size of it? Is that really what that sign's going to look like for Cross Students? I'm just curious.
The signs are actually what we call SCO or flat cutout letters. They are dimensional letters that will be attached to the building. They are solid metal construction. So they are painted black, but they have substance into them that they're actually in metal configuration.
Understood. Public comment? Commissioners? Is there a big call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Mr. Cardell? That passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Need to get your sign permit from billing inspection.
Thank you. Next up is B-24-68, Hall Family Investments LLC, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a two-part variance request. The first is over 60%. Being between the facade and the right-ofway of parking, you can see we're at 64%. We tried as best we could, but we're excited about this restaurant and trying to get as much parking on the site as we can. And then along the east side there, along 49, that just really was not a good spot for trees, so we tried to relocate those elsewhere on the site.
Staff comments? Engineering? Public comment? Commissioners? Is there a big call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Couch. Those variance says pass eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to be able to eat there soon, Tom? Yes? Not this one.
Next up is W-24-16, Springdale Industrial Park, Phase Two and Three, presented by ESI. This is a waiver request for street improvements and street lighting.
Thank you, Brandon Rush with ESI. This is a project for Shiloh Fence on Turnbow in the industrial park, and if you've been out there, there is almost no streetlights along Turnbow, and when we got a price for over $10,000 to add a single streetlight, we thought that seemed a little high, so we are asking for a waiver to not put in that streetlight.
In reality, you forgot to put it in when you started the project, right? It's been on the plan since day one.
It has been on the plan since day one. I don't think that it was ever really thought about until we went to close out this project.
Okay. I would like to make a suggestion that the developer be asked to work with the public facilities board to deposit with the public facilities board the cost of installation of the slide, so that they could put one in on the other side, way in development on the other side of cars. Think that's a possibility?
So that would be a cost equivalent to...
Installation of the streetlight?
I think if they were going to do that, they'd just put it in.
That's a good point. Any other staff comments? Public comment? Commissioners, any comments? Ozzy, my take on this is lighting is important for lots of things, including safety. If you look at that image, there's several lights on that road, and the fact that this was in the plans from the get-go and just wasn't installed due to cost is, to me, a good reason not to do it. It's just my fault. Without any other comments, this will be a motion to forward to city council, either for the waiver or against the waiver. I need a motion.
Motion to city council?
Motion, for or against the waiver request? Against. So Mr. Cardell's motion to city council is to deny the waiver request, and he is second. Second, Mr. Austin. So a yes vote would be yes, we support the, do not allow the waiver.
We recommend denial of the waiver, is what it is, yeah. We recommend denial of the waiver. That's what it is, yeah.
So commission recommends denial of the waiver, eight to zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution to go to council on the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
The next is other, it's a great category, P P twenty-three dash eleven. This is Elmdale Estates Extension Request presented by Sand Creek Engineering and Land Surveying.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Ferrero, Sand Creek Engineering. We've been working on this project for a little bit over a year now, and we just want to request an extension on the approval and the review, just in case. We resubmitted recently due to removing a lift station, which caused us to change up the layout along the frontage. No lots were removed or added, just the lift station lot, and I'd just like to get an approval on extension.
Staff comments? Engineering? Public comment? Commissioners? So is this extension for one more year? Is that what this is?
Yes.
This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion, subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Hussein, a second by Mr. Austin. This passes eight to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Next is B twenty-four dash zero-one Brazel Holden's LLC. This is a bill of assurance extension request presented by Tim Brazel. It's a big call for the vote.
Good evening. My name is Tim Brazel. I'm the owner and developer of this particular piece of property. Just still have it in motion with Dave Burris as the architect and Jason Ingles as the engineer. Just not quite to the development stage yet, so requesting another extension.
What kind of work have you been doing out there?
Just waiting on Jason Ingles. I mean, the architect.
Well, you've been moving dirt around, correct?
Yes, we did move some dirt around initially when we first were in there cleaning it up. We haven't done anything since. We were asked not to do anymore, but that was.
They stopped that dirt moving at the time we asked them to. I lived on the street, so I know.
Yeah, we haven't done anything else out there since.
What's the stuff that's shown that's been dumped on there? Where'd that come from?
Some additional fill material. We've got to bring it all up. It's all gotta be brought up.
Asking for a one-year extension?
Yes, ma'am.
Katie?
So I have no comments on the gravel, but right now that property needs to be revegetated because it's not, it is in violation of chapter one oh six. If it's not worked on for fourteen days, it has to be vegetated.
And Patsy, I'd just like to note that the first bill of assurance was just for six months, and it expired July twelfth.
Or Katie, the comment against what you just said, you said vegetate, is that seeded?
Seed and mulch is fine, yes. We need to have something growing that provides hundred percent stabilization, eighty percent coverage.
Are you on board with that, Mr. Brazel?
It's a tough time of year to do that. Can I use the sod excuse I heard earlier from January?
That's too cold?
No, but it, here's, I mean, I'm hoping to start this project very soon. What I, I mean, there's still some dirt work that could be done. It sounds like we either get a, we put up a steel fence and try to get a grading permit to move some, move some additional dirt, or we can, we can try to get things vegetated. I have no problem with that. It's just, it's a tough time of year to get grass.
I don't disagree. What if we just look at a shorter extension? Either give them back with some plans and start developing it, or you put, start vegetating it.
Are you submitting at the end of the next submission deadline?
I don't think so. The, I don't know. Jason Ingles, the civil side is pretty good, is just about done. It's the architectural side. We were waiting on Burris. We were playing with the topography, trying to figure out if we could do a two-story. It's a long, long story.
You just need to get Dave to get his act together and get it done.
I know, I know, and he's, he's on board. He's moving forward now. But I just don't want to be, six months flies by. I would sure hope that we can have it done and, and something to everybody by then. But I will do, I mean, I'll work with you however you want. I don't know how to get grass to grow out there right now, though.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Could I, well, could I put wattles around that area or something like?
Yeah, we just need to come up with a plan for stabilization of that site.
Yeah, we've compacted it. The dirt itself isn't going anywhere. I'm happy to put wattles around it or put a steel fence around it if that's satisfactory until we can get it re-vegetated.
Can we table this for thirty days and see if he comes up with a plan that's acceptable? Katie? So we extend the bill of assurance for thirty days for him to come back and tell us what he's gonna do?
Tell Mr. Burris he needs to get after it.
Does that work?
Yes, ma'am. Working with Katie then on the plan?
Y'all, in thirty days, you gotta come back and tell us, she's gotta tell us you got a plan, that you're moving forward, and it's okay to extend it longer than that.
Longer than thirty days.
Longer than thirty days. Okay.
And I need to come back and tell you that, or Katie's sufficient?
You need to be here.
Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Last one's, doesn't have a name. Just C. This is Ecclesia College. Doesn't have a number, I guess is what I meant to say. Tate RV Park presented by Mike Novak.
It doesn't have a number because this is an appeal of my decision that there is not a non-conforming use at this location, and they're appealing that decision stating that there is a non-conforming use. So that's what we're gonna talk about tonight.
Hi. You, my name is Mike Novak. I'm the president at Ecclesia College. We are out on the far west side of Springdale, if you haven't been out in that area, kind of between Elm Springs and Cave Springs. Kind of where Six Twelve is being built. We have an RV park that has been there since the year two thousand. It was built when we were part of Benton County. We have approval, written approval from the county to implement a RV park that was up to twenty-nine RV spots. Two thousand four, we were annexed into Springdale, and then we were notified in April of this year that we were, I'm not sure what the actual determination was, but that we were not a non-conforming or we were in violation somehow of something. So we're here basically to try to resolve that.
Let me go over some where we are on this project. As you said, you have a septic tank permit from the county in two thousand.
Yes.
That allowed for installation of a septic system for up to?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine RV park spaces.
In phases.
Okay. And was that septic system actually installed?
Yes.
Okay. The property was annexed into the city in two thousand and four. It was in that annexation where we allowed, the property owners requested to come in. There was no mention at that time that there was an RV park at that location. We didn't know that there was a septic system had been approved. Can we go back to the aerials that show us what it looked like in two thousand and four? I think we can get six. If you look at those aerials, there doesn't appear to be an RV park there, okay? In two thousand and thirteen, the college asked to be rezoned to P one in two thousand and thirteen. There was no mention at that time when the property was being rezoned to P one that there was an RV park at that location. An RV park or Use Unit Thirty is not a permitted or a conditional use in a P one park. My, my stand is we don't have anything to indicate that they intended to have that or that RV park was there when it was annexed into the city or when it was rezoned. It can't be considered to be a non-conforming use. If you go back and look at the aerials, there's a few times where there's a few RVs at that location. If we extended it to, to say it was a non-conditional, I mean, a non-conforming use, it's already been expanded beyond what was in there at that location. In twenty-one, you see there's probably, somebody, I'll have to count, I can't see that far, how many units there are there. That's substantial increase. And now today, we've got pictures of what it looked like. When we brought him into the office, and we've been talking about this for several months, you can see that some of the RVs have porches that have been built on them. For the time being, there was some utility equipment being stored there. There's all kinds of things going on there, and I think there's been some expansions done, some pads built, some power established, some septic system extensions with no permits. We have no permits for any of that going on. So it's my contention that this is not a non-conforming use. The only way it can continue is that they either, they need to rezon the property to a zoning classification that will allow for an RV park to be there.
So we, our contention is we did have permission from Benton County, and I don't know if you guys, do they have all of the stuff that we submitted? Okay, so we did receive permission from Benton County, and, and our understanding is that there is a, Arkansas code says that if you have permission to operate or a permit to operate a development or a project, that that will be honored, and the wording is shall be honored by any city that you annex into. So our understanding from the very beginning was when we annexed into Springdale that our property would just be grandfathered in and be able to continue. It's approved use by Benton County. Benton County approved the septic system. They approved the whole development, and so we operated it with that understanding. And when, when Patsy asked us to go and provide evidence that the park, you know, she mentioned some of those photos, and I just, I just have to make sure to mention that those photos are taken on one second of one minute of one hour of one day. They are not indicative of mobile use, because the RV park is a mobile use. It does not say that there was nobody there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So what we have done is we've gone back and requested all the water bills from the years in question. The, the electric bills, and I included in our, an email from the electric company, Carol Electric, they have disregarded all of those bills from that time period because they just don't maintain bills that long, and they went through computer system upgrade, and, and so they're saying they can't pull any information. So I don't know, you guys may know more than me, but I don't know, is there a statute of limitations? How far back we can go? We find it difficult. A lot of our people have, have died. That would verify some of this information, but in, in no way, shape, or form have we ever discontinued use. That seemed to be the bigger issue at, at play when we were talking with the planning department, was they were saying that we had discontinued use. Not that we weren't grandfathered in, but that we had at some point discontinued use. And we feel like we have provided sufficient information to, to counter that with, with evidence. We also have worker records. We work with a volunteer organization called Sowers. They have been with us since nineteen ninety-seven. And they're a fantastic group, and so they, they built, we have a community building on that RV park. They built it with volunteers. They use it every year. Since, from nineteen ninety-seven, they were on the other side. We had small little stuff on the other property. They built that lodge in two thousand, and they've used it every single year since then. They, there's a whole list, a hundred and fifty workers, volunteer workers that have been on our, on our campus since we built that. In between there, we have other records, and this has been very difficult to find some of this because we just, the way this park worked is we're, you know, we're a nonprofit, so we don't charge everybody who uses that park. It's a private park. It was never designed to be a public access where we just, you know, open it up and have everybody come in. We background check everybody. Most, ninety percent of the people that work there are people that work with us. They're volunteering, helping on projects, building different things. And so we've had people that have stayed there for a weekend. We've had people that have stayed there for a day. What constitutes usage in our mind is that the park was always available. The water bills, you know, definitely show from two thousand four to two thousand eight, there was continuous usage. There was never a six-month period of time where the park was not being used in some way, shape, or form. But we have, we have donors that fill in gaps, that stayed there for a night. We pulled records from our QuickBooks showing that we had renters that were there various times. And to the best of our ability, this is, this is, we feel sufficient evidence showing that the park has been used properly, the way it was intended to be used from the very beginning. We never intended to use twenty-nine spots from day one. It was always supposed to be, we had nine spots we were gonna use. And then as time went on, we would increase it by ten, depending on whether we had funding to do it, and then ten more at the end for a total of twenty-nine. So where this, in January, we were completing our final ten spots, and that's when, that's when this issue kind of came up. So we, we've been always operating under the impression that we were grandfathered in, that there wasn't anything we needed to do. Now, I'm the third administration. We've had two other administrations prior to me being here. So I don't know what all has been said or done as far as things before me, but I do know that this is the information that we were operating under. The understanding was that we had this park approved and that we would just continue to use it as long as we maintained use, and which is what we have done.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. The gentleman that was with you in our office indicated there was a time when all of that area on the west side was grown up, and he had to come in and clean it up. And so that area wasn't being used.
No, not the.
And hadn't been used for several, many years.
The east side is where we started. That was our first phase. That was the nine spots we put in.
So you, if you had a non-conforming use, you have expanded it in the last year saw by going in and clearing it out? Okay, and, and you're saying that everybody who's parked there in all this time has been working on the school? What about those utility companies that were working? They work with the school?
No, I said about ninety percent. Most of the people that we let in there that have come and asked us to stay there are people that are working with us. Some, we've had painters that, that have painted our buildings for us, and we just kind of let them stay at a reduced rate. Some people we let stay just because they needed help, and we've had, you know, pastors have called us and said, could so-and-so stay here, and we've made exceptions. You know, we just kind of use the park as just a tool for building relationships. That's, that's kind of the whole, the whole point of that park was to network and build relationships.
Okay, so when you started expanding and adding electrical services and connecting to the sewer, you didn't think there was a need to get a permit from the city?
Well, we were operating under the impression that this was part of our, what we had originally agreed with Benton County was that this would be a project built in stages. So when, when the project, when we were annexed into Springdale, we just assumed by the fact that we were grandfathered, that all that would just continue, that we'd be allowed to continue to do that. And that is what the law does indicate, that we are allowed to, that Springdale should honor that agreement that we had with Benton County. So our agreement with Benton County was to do in phases. It just, we didn't have a timeframe. It was whenever we could get the money to do the next phase, we would do it in increments of ten.
Can you explain why that wasn't presented to the city when it was annexed or when it was rezoned? It just seems strange that you wouldn't tell us that part of that property was being used for an RV park as, because we talked about you had dorms, you have classroom areas, you had an auditorium. We had all these kind of things, but there never was any mention of an RV park. That seems kind of strange.
To my knowledge, every, every bit of master plan that I have seen prior to two thousand and fourteen, we have a new, had a new one that was drawn up in two thousand and fourteen, but prior to that, everything has had the RV park listed on there. I, I wasn't here when we were annexed in. I wasn't part of the leadership here at that time. But my understanding is everything was on that master plan. I don't, I don't know what was submitted when they were rezoned, but I know that every drawing I have ever looked at has had that RV park listed on there.
Well, I can tell you that the rezoning application in two thousand and thirteen that was presented to the city didn't say anything about an RV park.
Because we only have one master plan that we've used. It was done by Sand Creek Engineering, and it's clearly listed on there. And I don't know what else they would have submitted other than that. That's the only master plan we've ever had.
We didn't, the rezoning didn't necessarily have to have the master plan with it because you're requesting to rezon it to P one with a list of uses that were available in a P one. And an RV park never was listed as a permitted use in a P one zone. I don't remember seeing, I mean, I've talked to people about the master plan, but it never was submitted to the city.
And I can't answer that. I just know the master plan that we have in our possession that we brought and showed you guys in April, that is the only master plan that we have, and that would have been, I don't know what you would have required us to do to be rezoned, because I wasn't there for those meetings, but I would, that was the only master plan we would have put in.
Okay. I will, I will reassert that I don't think there's a non-conforming use status that existed that should be able to. that existed that should be able, allowed to continue. If you decide there was one, it has been, been expanded more than 30% in the last couple of years, and if this is to operate, it needs to be rezoned to a C5 zone, which is the only place an RV park has been, is approved, and we need to bring it up to standard. We need to know that those electrical connections and those septic system connections are adequate if it's going to operate in that location.
So are, am I hearing you say then that the agreement we have with Benton County was not valid?
You have a septic system permit, that's all I see. I don't have anything else.
I, we, we turned in, commercial development approval by Benton County.
You have a statement?
October 3, 2002. This was signed by Michelle McNeil, Planning Administrator.
2002, I mean, normally a development-
No, it was, it was referencing April 19, 2000, when they approved it. It was just, they were sending us a copy of it.
A development plan doesn't last forever if you're not moving forward with doing it. In our case, it's only good for a year, and you have to get an extension. But we're talking 20 years ago this was approved, and now all of a sudden you're expanding it without permits. I, I'm sorry, I just can't, that just doesn't seem acceptable from the way we-
That was our understanding with Benton County, was that we would, could build it as we, as we were, as we had funding to do it. They never put us on a deadline or a timeline. We got annexed into Springdale. I, to be honest, I don't know that Springdale even fully knew that we were in Springdale for years. Nobody ever came out and talked to us. I mean, it was just kind of like, we were just, we're in the middle of nowhere, you know?
Oh, I don't think that's true, because I think the fire department and building inspection knew that some of the structures had all kinds of issues over the years, and-
Yeah, down the road, they definitely, we definitely connected with them, but, but this is a, and this is a, I mean, it's not a small deal. You know, what, what we have out there now is something we spent well over $100,000 over the years building, to the point, which was part of our original plan from, from the beginning. This is not something we just thought up last year or five years ago. We've been doing what we have always said we were going to do. Nobody ever came and said, you have a timeline to get this done, because we, that would have changed a lot of what we were doing. We, we just kind of, we, we did it as we had a need, and we didn't need all those spaces until we started growing, and then we needed 10 more, and so we just followed what we had originally presented, and I, I don't, I respectfully disagree. I don't believe that we are changing anything from the beginning that we really were trying to do, and are trying to do what we always said we were going to do.
Can I, can I say something?
I just have one comment. It's very, it's never happened in all the years I've been here, that someone would expect to have a 20-year-old plan that they were still working with that had never been submitted to the city, and they didn't tell us when it was rezoned. So I, I stand by my position. Y'all have to decide what you want to do with it.
I was just going to say, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think most of us probably want to do what's the right thing, and legally the right thing, and I don't know if a lot of, I mean, if all this can be true on both sides and just, you know, a misunderstanding from, not a misunderstanding, but not knowing the full process or whatever, so I don't want to not do what's right by y'all. I, I know there's probably some things where things could be brought up to code and us get eyes on things, so I don't know the best way to proceed from a legality perspective of what's the recommendation from, from you for where things stand, because there is a lot of moving parts here. I don't know if everybody else agrees, but I want to do what's right.
David, do you want to, you want to talk about it from a legal standpoint?
Sure. From a legal standpoint, the significant date is 2013, where the owner petitioned the city of Springdale to rezone this property to P1. That was approved. A lot of things are stated overtly, and some things are implied at a rezoning, but one of the things that is clear and according to law is that that is where people are saying, I waive any past grandfathering I might arguably have had at that point. I accept the city zoning scheme at this point. The city zoning scheme does not include this type of activity in a P1. That's the relevant, and that is the dispositive determination. Lapse and expansion are doctrines where there is some grandfathering. Clearly does not apply here.
Can we have the image of 2013, or closest date to that timeframe?
You got 16 or 11?
Let's look at 11 and 16. How long have you had your position currently that you're in right now?
Since '21.
Okay, so you're, you're kind of the back end of this process. You were on there when Benton County said, where they said, you've just been handed this documentation to you, and-
I, I have been with the organization for a long time, not been in, in leadership since '21.
Of the, how many units do you currently, how many RVs do you currently have on the property?
19.
How many of them are permanent?
None of them are permanent.
Well, how many of them have built decks? I mean, you know what I'm saying. I can go, I mean, there are RVs that are there for a week, couple of days, and gone, and there are RVs that are there quite some time. And usually, when you build stuff around your RV where it looks like a deck to a house, that's more of a permanent. How many of these units are permanent?
I, a few, and, and from that definition, I know one of the guys up there builds decks and sells them, and that's kind of his business, and so I think, and I think somebody has a wheelchair up there, and so they build a, a access, you know, port for them to get up there, but there are, there's a handful up there that have been there, you know, a pretty long time. I don't know the exact number. They still come and go, you know, pretty regularly.
What's stored in those Conexes, or those storage containers?
I'm sorry?
What, what's stored in those containers?
So right adjacent to, on that, I'm actually not sure where that view is, but on the south end of the property, there is a construction project, a red dirt removal project that's been going on, and that's been approved by the state of Arkansas, but that's, a lot of those containers are stuff that they're, they store their equipment in while they're working on the stuff, you know, down there. They're moving from the south end to the north end, removing 40 acres of, of red dirt. So that's where a lot of that, some of those pictures, this is an older photo, some of those pictures were, were trucks that we've, we've communicated to, that they need to leave. They were guys that lived in the RV that were parking their line trucks, and we've told them that that, that can't happen anymore, so they've, they've removed those, but-
Ron, were you out there today? Can you tell us about today?
I was out there Friday, and there were 24 campers out there that were hooked up. And to answer your question about the Conex boxes, they are directly south of this, the right, or the left-hand picture that has the red trailer. It's just me sitting in the truck. I took this one on the right, and then turned and took the picture of the Conex on the left. So it's the south or the bottom drive that circles around from the community building or whatever that's called.
So Patsy, if the rezoning kind of reset everything, and knowing what's out there today based on what we just heard, what's, what's the city's recommendation on what should happen?
Well, if they were successful in getting it rezoned, they would have to submit a large-scale development plan. We'd have to see what's out there and what has been permitted, what hasn't, to bring it up to, to the standard of an RV park. We have standards. It needs to have a service building, which I understand you have a building there. It's been there all this time, that you use for maintenance, and there are washing machines and showers and stuff in it, too?
It's just a community lodge building.
Yeah, which you've used at for other things, not just for the RV park, too, right?
It's primarily for the RV park. There, there may be an occasional meeting in there, but it's for the use of the tenants of the RV.
And I, and I can't say if the electrical work they did will meet the city's code or not. I don't know. Nobody out there's, nobody's been out there to look at it. Now, there is another concern with this, if rezoning it, because it is adjacent to the city of Elm Springs, and because there is no other commercial within 1,000 feet, they have to be agreeable to the rezoning as well. And I can tell you, this issue was brought to our attention by the property owners in that adjacent subdivision, when they keep seeing more trucks and more RVs going in there, so.
To only be clear, that according to our attorney, in 2013, the college asked for and received P1 rezon, and this particular use of this property does not confirm, conform with anything in that zoning. Is that correct?
So is there a, a, is this a municipal code violation essentially, is what we're talking about, right?
It's a zoning code violation, yes.
So is there, my understanding is there is a statute of limitations on when, how far back you can go, and is the city's position that they're going to go back to 2013 that may exceed that statute of limitations of, I believe it's one, one year or three years?
Yeah, I'm not an attorney. You're going to have to get David to answer that.
This would be considered ongoing?
Can you, I, you explain that?
Ongoing, statute of limitations applies to say you, you go out and you steal something seven years ago, and if it was a misdemeanor, well, we, we can't go after you, unless you're still in the process of stealing that, and that, and this is just an example. I'm not trying to say you're stealing anything. But where you've got it, you, you still have people out there, you still have the violation conditions in existence, it's ongoing, so statute of limitations would not apply.
Can you move forward in the images to like '21, I think? Or go back one? And one more? Yeah, it's apparent to me from 2017, when you, you mentioned you had people stop for a period of time, and, and it appears like in the mid-teens that maybe this was used as people came to donate their time for a week, they'd park their RV there, but it clearly changed in the next several years, where the decision, either by demand, which is probably the case, I mean, there's obviously RV parks popping up all over northwest Arkansas. In 2019, '20, and further on, the, the demand of having an RV park here was seen and met, and I think, you know, no right, I mean, obviously, you took advantage of opportunity where somebody wanted to, to put RV, and you had opportunity to have land there, and you thought you had the right to do that. I think, I think our argument is, you may, you may indeed, but to do it in the city of Springdale, we, we would probably recommend it be rezoned for the appropriate use.
So what they are doing in, they are appealing my decision that it's not a nonconforming use. They're asking you to make the determination that it is a nonconforming use by overturning my decision, and that's what they're appealing today.
So this is a call for the vote. Is a yes vote meaning that we support the appeal, or how, how should we vote for this as far as what's in front of us?
David, what's the clearest way to do this? The appeal is on the table. If there is no motion to overturn the planning committee, planning director's decision, then the decision stays as it is, correct?
That's correct, because you've made an agency decision on this. He's challenging that and asking for a vote. The vote does not have to take place, that is correct.
If no action is taken, then my decision is not overturned, and it's not a nonconforming use.
Can I just say one more thing? Yes, sir. I just, I just want to say that this RV park is, from the, from the very beginning, is a foundational part of our operation. We rely, we don't get state funding, we don't get tax benefits, we are private, four-year college, and the part of the way we operate this college is by having people come in and volunteer their time, help us out any way we can, and it's a way we can give back to our community when people do have a legitimate need. We have places that they can stay temporarily, help any way we can, and we've always used it that way. And there's a lot of reasons why you could sit here and say, no, we're not going to, we're not going to let this continue, but we've been there for 24 years. It has been a quiet, private, serene place. The reason that there are people that have called in and complained is not because of the RV park, it's because of the noise going on all around the subdivision, and there's a ton of it, not just from us. Everywhere you look, there is construction going on in this area, and, but that's going to end, and the park will continue to be what it always has been, and it's an asset to the city of Springdale. It's not a, it's not a terrible thing. It's an asset to us, to all of our donors, anybody that we can possibly reach out to. It's a way for us to continue operating. To not allow us to continue to do this is going to have a really huge impact on what we do. We use our entire property, 240 acres. We donate it to, to the Rotary Club every year to, to run the mud run. We help them. We have our students go out there and help prepare the, the course. We do all that. Taking away a fund, this is a fund, funding opportunity for the school. Taking that away puts us in a very, very difficult position. I just want you to think about that before you vote, because it, this is not hurting anything for us to operate this park. We've been there 24 years, way before anybody else got out there, and so to vote that down puts us in a really, really tough spot. I just want you to know that it's, it's not just a simple decision.
But we're not denying you to have that park. We're just asking you to rezone it to where you can make this a viable park.
And meet the standards, right? Meet the C, what, C5?
Yeah, meet, meet the zoning requirements like we'd ask anybody in the city of Springdale.
We, we were told in our last meeting that we probably would not get it rezoned because of the issue with Elm Springs, and so it's, it's really, it's really unlikely that they're going to rezone it, and so it's, it's just, it's just going to be a very, very big, it's going to be a huge issue that doesn't have to be-
Have you had any discussions with the city of Elm Springs since this came up about their position? Because it's a position of the city council. The city council would have to adopt a resolution supporting the rezoning request. Have you had any conversations with the city of Elm Springs?
We have not. We've been, we've been working overtime on trying to provide all the evidence to that you, what you asked us was to provide evidence that we were using the park, that what we thought we were addressing today was the non-use, that, that for the six-month period, we didn't use it for six months supposedly. That's what those pictures were, we were told. That was convincing evidence that we didn't use it for a period of time. So we've spent our entire time compiling the evidence that we thought you wanted to show that we were using it, and, and now today, we're being told that's not really what we're trying to get. It's that, you know, we, we have to rezone it. That's a-
I think we told you at the time that we didn't think the water bills and electric bills was sufficient evidence to support that it was operating all the time. I mean-
I, I don't understand how that's not, but, I mean, it, it, we don't just turn the tap on and let it run for free. We paid those bills every month, and, and it does show that there were some months that there was no activity, and we, we don't deny that. There were definitely some months nobody was there, but for those years in question, they were, there was, every part of the year, there was somebody occasionally here or there on the water bills. I wish we could show you the electric bills, because they don't leak, but it would show electric use, but they can't produce it. We, we've tried every way we can to get it, they just cannot, but it's 20 years ago. It's, it's kind of hard to expect people to keep records like that. It's a very, very difficult task that we've had in front of us to try to prove something that's difficult to prove, and yet we, we felt like we produced enough that satisfied the issue that we thought we were addressing.
Well, it's hard to ask the commission to look at something that there's no, I mean, you know?
Well, in my mind, it's somewhat mute, unfortunately. Basically, I'm thinking from 2013 forward, when you asked to be rezoned P1, according to what I heard tonight, anything before that means, doesn't have any bearing on this decision.
I would love to see the documentation that, that, because I wasn't, I didn't turn that in, but I know that on our master plan, it listed, and the, if, if nobody had said anything at that time, the assumption was always, I've always heard them talk about, it was grandfathered in, and so I don't think anybody was ever being malicious. It was just that, we're only talking about the rest, because the, the RV park is the north end of all the rest of the property that got, you know, zoned P1, and so the assumption was, well, obviously, that's the north end, but that's already there. It's the rest of the property we were talking about, because we had to turn in a large-scale development, because we were adding on to a classroom building on the other side of our campus. So that's how the whole thing in 2000, 2013 started. We weren't just coming to rezone. It was, we, we had to do it in order to build that classroom addition. And so I don't think, if we had known at that point that we were going to give up our, our RV park, it would, I, I guarantee you, nobody would have agreed to that.
Understood.
Well, I think if we had known there was an RV park there, we would advise you not to rezone that to P1.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a long time ago, way before I was in this position. I think as far as the commission's concerned, I think what we have in front of us is a, a call for the vote. I think if there is no call for the vote, that the, the decision by the planning director stands as this is an expired nonconforming use. Here, no call for the vote, that's our stance. Thank you. Move forward, planning, planning director's report.
The denial or the failure to move forward, I recommend approval for the Phase 2 of, Phase 2 of cottages at Clear Creek. Cottages at Clear Creek was presented to city, my, my brain has got to switch gears. The city council reviewed that and has tabled that to give the applicant a chance to work with staff to address those issues that were outstanding, one being the fact that the park property was not included in Phase 2. Y'all denied the revised PUD. Y'all denied the revised PUD, which would have moved it to Phase 3 but to be, or Phase 4 but to be built and bonded in Phase 3. And none of that stuff passed. You didn't amend the PUD document that we were working under, so none of that changed. So we have been working with staff. They are coming forward with a revised plat that shows that piece of property being added to it, which we discussed since last February. And that will be at council on Tuesday night. We also talked about the idea of, part of the PUD had always been for LID features. They have finally recognized the portion of the PUD development plan that had that stuff identified. And they are working on a bonding proposal for that. Those are the elements that are outstanding. It will go back to council on Tuesday night with the revised plat that shows the part going on there. There was a great deal of support from the council that once a PUD is approved, we expect everybody to do what it says in the PUD, just like the position that you guys took. In order for them to revise the PUD, they will have to convince you all that there's enough change for you to hear it. And if you determine there's not enough revisions to warrant hearing another revision, they can't revise it for a year. Because once a rezoning is denied, it's a year before you can bring it back. So right now, we're just working under the same PUD document that we had before. And I don't know for sure that they want to be at the August meeting to discuss whether or not they're revising it enough for y'all to consider another rezoning.
What phase are they proposing the playground on?
Two, which was where it was originally supposed to be in two.
Right. Because they pushed it, was it three or four?
Well, they wanted to put it in four and bond it with three, which seems really odd. But now they're putting it in two. And we have some pretty good bond estimates for it. I think we can make this work. The issues with the, they did go ahead and saw the pond just before council meeting last time. And they are working on some LIDs. We got some really pretty pictures, but I don't think we have any plans that shows that it's being carried forward. But I, I want to thank the council for taking the stand to, to support the fact that we're all serious when we do a PUD. And if it gets sold to somebody else, they're supposed to take care of the same thing.
They have the ability to go back and fix that play area that's, I mean, I know they won't go back and fix it, but how do they, are they trying to incorporate something else to make up for that?
They're trying to put some LID features in that. But yet again, all we had was pretty pictures, no design issues yet. So we'll see what happens with that.
Yeah, it wasn't great.
And they don't, they are not addressing the sloping yards in the front of those that have the rear access points because they claim they can't because they've sold all those lots. So anyway. That's all I have. Is there anything I missed that is outstanding? Work session will be on the, somebody tell me what date it is. The 20th and we will-
August 20.
We will continue to go over the coverage of land use plan. We have some more map updates that we've gotten through the GIS department that we want you to look at and see if we can't get this ready to move forward. We have a couple of development proposals that y'all probably need to see before they come to council. And if they are ready, we may give them 15 minutes to come and talk to you about some concepts they're looking at, which is a PUD that has some unusual things in it. I don't think it's going to be ready by then, but we'll see. And if Rash Colman wants to come in and talk about whether or not they have enough revisions, do you want to allow them on the agenda in August or not?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that they will, but at least I know that, everybody good with that?
Well, I mean, I just, I think our position's been, we're willing to work with them. So I think we need to show that in our ability, a desire to meet with them if they're willing